This is the City of Opaaca, first Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
All right, welcome everybody to our regular scheduled city council meeting. It is 6:02 PM on Wednesday, November 4th, 2020. And I'll call this meeting to order. And let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your eyes. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the public.
Public.
For which it stands.
And for nation.
Our God.
Is.
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 Justice.
Thank you for that. I know it's a little awkward to do it that way, but it still works. All right, Sandy, if you want to just read the clerk's open meeting statement for us?
Sure. This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted, given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
All right. And Sandy, you want to take a roll for us?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
He's on again, so just give us a thumbs up there. I'll turn to you. Yep, he's got his thumb up there.
Great. Lori Chestnut, here. Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present. We have a quorum.
Nice. Thank you, Sandy. Next up then is the consent agenda. Sandy says we don't have any additions or deletions to that. So unless I, unless somebody would like to see an item moved to the regular agenda, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
Move to approve as printed.
Olson, second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Olson, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Anybody that would like to abstain? Again, we have a regular agenda that you received, and there's no additions there or deletions. So we're looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Keeland, most approve.
Second, Martin.
Motion by Keeland, second by Martin, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Anybody that would like to abstain? Motion carried. All right, under non-agenda items and announcements, we have a presentation by Tracy Barron for the Opaaca Historical Society. And I see Tracy up there. Hi, Tracy.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yeah, thank you so much for giving me some time tonight. Is it okay if I go ahead and start?
Yeah, you're all set. Go ahead.
All right. Well, for those of you that don't know me, I am Tracy Barron, and I am the Director at the Opaaca Historical Society. And I've been in that role now for nearly five years. And I wanted to start out by first saying thank you so much for your continued support for the Opaaca Historical Society and our efforts to preserve Opaaca's history. Each year, the City of Opaaca allocates funding for our organization that supports staff and operations programs and historic preservation of our buildings. And we're very thankful for that. So thank you very much. For the fiscal year 2021 budget, which we've submitted to the city, the Historical Society is requesting $16,000. This is the same amount we received last year. And with this amount, we can continue our operations and further our mission while at the same time keeping the city's budget and its possible funding challenges in mind this year. The year 2020 started strong for the Historical Society. We welcomed nearly 1,200 visitors to our programs in 2019. And so the programs we held in 2020 started out very strong as well, including one we did over at the Danes Hall about the history of Main Street. Shortly after I did that program, we had to shut down, and things changed pretty dramatically for all of us. In March, we canceled all the rest of our spring programs, and we closed our doors due to the pandemic. In June, we opened our doors open for appointments again at all of our buildings. But the limited access to our buildings has meant decreased traffic, less community events and programs, and less donations from the meeting room rentals, visits, events, and fundraisers that we typically hold. The pandemic, though, has encouraged us to think about how we connect with our members, visitors, and community. And without their physical presence at our buildings, we found ways to reach them where they are, at home, while fulfilling our mission to educate and promote awareness of Opaaca's history. We increased posts on Instagram and Facebook. We've grown our page likes on Facebook from 1,600 to almost 2,200. We've also updated our website with an easier-to-navigate format and added a brand-new Chain of Lakes website, which features Chain of Lakes postcard and photograph collections from the Historical Society. This summer, we also handed out craft kits at the library that helped tell part of the story of the Hutchison House Museum to Opaaca residents as well. We've also found ways to fundraise during the pandemic to help offset the losses due to decreased open hours and lack of events. We did hold a few Brought Fries this summer, and we're also producing a Safer at Home cookbook as a joint fundraiser with the library. And the cookbook will recontain recipes and stories from Opaaca's time during the pandemic, and will be available soon, in about three weeks, around Thanksgiving. The city's and the community's support has enabled us to staff our buildings for our appointments, to create new exhibits and catalog collections, and to find new ways to reach the community. In 2020, we increased the director's hours, so my hours, to 20 hours per week, which has been incredibly beneficial with our increased workload. We had more than 40 appointments throughout the summer at our buildings. And at the Holly Center, we've answered numerous research requests and have fulfilled gift shop orders, so our time remains busy. The exhibits at the Holly Center continue to be updated and changed. And if you haven't had a chance to visit the Holly Center before, or perhaps it's been a few years, we invite you to make an appointment and view our exhibit space. We received a traveling exhibit from the National Archives this year that celebrates the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. And that's on display next to a new exhibit that we created about elections in Opaaca. And then we also have new exhibits this year about Opaaca schools, Whispering Pines Park, and then celebrations in Opaaca. So those we've been changing while we've been closed as well. The number of collections that have been donated in 2020 has increased also. We're up about 10% over last year. And so those are objects that people are donating to the Historical Society. Your financial support helps us to preserve those artifacts through the purchase of archival storage supplies. With less open hours, our staff and our volunteers have had more time to catalog our collections, which is kind of a behind-the-scenes task that is often pushed aside during our normal years. The cataloging of these collections helps us more fully tell the stories of Opaaca and the Chain of Lakes through exhibits and research. The Hutchison House Museum and the Depot were also open for scheduled tours this summer. We were also able to tackle some important projects at both of those buildings with the help of our community. At the Depot, we finished installing flooring in the basement. We've repaired and painted the caboose, and we painted the car barn with the help of Habitat for Humanity. At the Hutchison House, the City of Opaaca, and then also Habitat for Humanity, helped us install a brand-new fence around the house, and that replaces the former fence that was damaged in last year's storm. We've also cleaned and beautified the gardens. And then, most recently, with the help of the Opaaca Foundry, we recast a broken rural school bell that was broken in a storm two years ago. And I just stopped over there today, and it's up. So today was its debut again back in the gardens. Though the future of our in-person programs and the opening of our buildings is truly unknown, we have much planned for 2021 and continue to look for ways to reach people wherever they are. We have a program set beginning in March on topics such as prohibition, Whispering Pines Park, and one-room schoolhouses. These programs will be either in-person or virtual. And several exhibits are in the works at the Holly Center as well, and the Hutchison House. And our collections catalog will continue. We have created actually a virtual school program this year for the fourth-grade students. They typically come out to the Hutchison House Museum for tours. So we created a virtual program for them, and that can be used in future years as well. And at the Depot, volunteers are working on a new model train layout in the basement. So we've continued to keep busy at all of our buildings. This year has forced us to pivot to reach people both safely in-person and virtually. But in that process, the Opaaca Historical Society has only furthered its mission to preserve the history of the Opaaca area and share it with others. We continue to grow and make new challenges and find new ways to connect our local history to people's daily lives. Thank you so much for your ongoing support and for helping us to preserve our city's history. It's been a pleasure working with so many of you in the last five years as Director.
Tracy, thank you for that update. Much appreciated. I know this has been a difficult year for, for your group too, and, and look forward to better things next year. Does anybody have any comments or questions that you would like to ask Tracy at this time?
This is Lori. I'd just like to thank her for the awesome job that she does over there, keeping everything rolling.
Oh, thanks, Lori.
Yeah. Thank you, Tracy. If you don't know, Tracy also sits on our City Planning Commission as a volunteer there, also a voting member. So it's great to have you involved in that too.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, let's move on then. Sandy Stibbs, on my script, let's put in there that to remind me to introduce other people that are at the meeting. I always forget to do that, and I'm going to do it right now. But so into attendance, that would be staff-wise, it looks like we have our city administrator, Aaron Johnson, city clerk Sandy Stibbs. I see Sue Abrahamsen is in attendance for the library. We have Brian Hosell, Chief Brian Hosell. Tom Hart, City Attorney Tom Hart is here. Kathy is on, right? I don't see her on my screen, but I know Kathy, our treasurer, is on, Finance Director. And Andrew Whitman is on.
Andrew Dane's on as well.
Okay, thanks. And Andrew Dane is on. That's right, we have a topic for you tonight too. And then I, not that I left the best for last, but I did want to mention that Justin Barron's is on tonight too. And Justin, I know this isn't the normal meeting for updates, but I'd like to get a little update on two things. One, Granite Street. I saw the, the picture of the, it repaved and stuff like that on Facebook today. But also, I'd like you to just remind people about leaf pickup too, and how that's working throughout the city.
So Granite Street, the pavement is 100% complete. We just have a few minor odds and ends to pick up. So that's the road. We will open it by the end of the day, Friday. So by the weekend, Ubilla Drive, Granite Street, brand-new. The parking lot still has to be striped, so we're going to leave that closed till next Monday, as that crew is not available till Monday. And cross your fingers, the weather holds out, because it looks like it'd still be nice on Monday. So that's, that's how that's all shaping up. So the end is near with that. Leaf pickup, we have a schedule. We rotate around each ward. That's online. It's been on Facebook. It was in the mail stuffers for the utility bills. And basically, what we do is we follow that schedule. We hit that ward first. When we think we got all the leaves or have all the leaves, then we just move on to the next. We just keep moving, no matter what. So if you want to get your leaves out there now, and it's not your ward, certainly go ahead, and there's a good chance we'll come around and get them too.
Probably a forewarning on Granite Street. Watch your speed limit there. Nice new road. And it's downhill if you're coming from west of town, so be careful there. All right, Justin, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Justin? We need to do public input yet too. Do we, Sandy or Aaron, did we have anybody that requested to, to speak to us on public input tonight?
No. The only one I got is I received a call from Nolan Seawold, who I'm sure is listening. And he just said, things are moving in the right direction with the zoning code. So that was, that was all I received.
Well, that makes me feel better. Okay, let's move on to unfinished business then. We have, and I think, Aaron, you're going to explain these, but you might have seen these in a meeting ago or so, but you're seeing them back on the screen. And there, there's a reason for that. But we have some resolutions that we need to ratify tonight. So Aaron, you want to go through those?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm going to speak to kind of all three of these, A, B, and C in one, and why we're bringing this forward again. As you can see in the agenda, these were approved, two of them were approved on April 8th, number 1454 and 1455. These are, as it relates to the authorizing of, an issuing of, of the bond sales. And the reason we're bringing it forward again, this just happened this past week. So this is kind of ratifying it. The reason we're bringing it forward again is because as we worked with our partners through this, with all the changes in the pandemic, and the notifying of, of meetings and so on and so forth, we have always posted on our website the statement that reads, "Open public access to meetings. All meetings will be virtual until further notice. We will broadcast all city meetings on Facebook Live, FM 96.3, and Wynn TV 991." Public input for any city meeting can be submitted to public input at cityofopaaca.org. So that statement was what we had posted on our website as we entered this whole Safer at Home pandemic, and we've kept it up. On the first couple, I think we also had it on our agenda, but then somehow over time, it was not on the actual agenda itself. So just as an administrative piece, and to be safe, we're bringing this forward again with that exact content on our actual agenda, to make sure we're meeting everything. From a standpoint of, of open meetings and notifying, you know, we've been, we've talked to attorneys, you know, past, this past spring, and the website does, is sufficient for that, in their, in our attorney's opinion. But this is just cleaning it up from an administrative standpoint. So that's why you see these in front of you again.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. So the first one, and we have to do these separately too, I understand. The first one is Resolution Number 1468. This is ratifying a resolution number 1465, approved at our September 1st, 2020, authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale not to exceed $6.1 million in general obligation promissory notes. Anybody have any questions or discussion? We'd be looking for a motion then to approve 1468.
This is Lori. I'd move to approve Resolution 1468.
This is Mary. I'll second.
Okay, we have a more, a motion by Chestnut, second by Fair, that we approve Resolution Number 1468. Any discussion? We need a roll call vote here. Sandy?
Steve Hackett.
Steve, unmute your mic, and I think we'll be able to hear you now. Try that once. Nope, we can't. Do your thumb. You said thumbs up.
Okay, thanks. Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thanks, Sandy. The next one is 1454, and this is the one, same thing, but it's for issuance not to exceed $1.25 million from the water, for the water system revenue bonds, Series 2020. So again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Olson to approve.
Second.
Peterson, second. I believe it's 1469, Brian.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Are you okay with that, Eric?
Yeah, 1469.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't know why I said that. Okay. So this is Resolution Number 1469. Any discussion? Oh, the motion was by Olson, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Your thumbs up, yep. Sorry.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. And then the last one is Resolution Number 1470, and this is the same dollar amount, $1.25 million from the sewer system revenue bonds. We need a motion to approve.
This is Lori. Move to approve.
Motion by?
Martin, second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Martin, that we approve Resolution Number 1470. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm so used to doing that. This has to be a roll call vote also. Sorry, Sandy. Thumbs up.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you, Sandy. So next up, we have ordinance number 092020. This is, again, dealing with the zoning code. We tabled it at our last meeting, went to city planning, and now it's back on our agenda for first reading. Aaron, you want to just tell us the route this law took to, to get back here again, or this ordinance?
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor. So as Mayor just said, you guys had the first reading at our last council meeting. We did receive public input at that time, and it was decided that we should continue to have a conversation with that individual. We did that prior to the Plan Commission meeting. That was on October 26th. We talked about it at Plan Commission on October 30th, 26th. There were no real changes that came out of that, really. We just kind of went through questions, addressed questions, explained why things were in there the way that they were, for the specific questions of that person, Mr. Walter and Ms. Walter, who had the, the public input on that night. So we're bringing it forward again. Because there was no substantial changes, there's not, there's not a public hearing that needs to be redone, which has allowed us to bring this forward as the first reading once again at this meeting. So I also wanted to mention that in between that time period, we had, I had a good conversation, both myself and Mr. Sanders, with Alder Chestnut, about things specific to the Fulton Street overlay district. And I believe that we, I think we talked through everything, Lori, that we probably needed to. And I think you got some clarification on site plan and how that impacts everything, and some of the, some of the safeguards to, that maybe address some of your, your questions or concerns. And, and those were really the comments that we received. And so we're, we're sitting here today, and Jeff would have absolutely been with us tonight. He's had a family emergency that came up, kind of unexpected today, so can't, can't join us. But we're really looking to just move this from the first reading to the second reading, if council feels comfortable, which the second reading would be November 17th. So with that, I'll kind of open it up for any questions.
Aaron and Mayor, this is Tom Hart. If I could just jump in real quick. Just point of procedure, since this was tabled at the last meeting for the purpose of not proceeding to a first reading and sending it to committee, I think maybe we should have a motion just to remove it from the table and place it back on consideration for a first reading.
All right. Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Hopefully, everybody understands what we're trying to do here, since we tabled it. So does anybody want to untable it? Is that what you called it? Untable?
This is Keeland. I was the one who tabled it, so let's untable. I'll move to untable.
Olson, second, untable.
Okay, we got a motion by Keeland, second by Olson, that we untable the, the first reading of this ordinance. Is that like cleaning the table? All right, I think we can do this with a voice vote. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, so back to the discussion on the first reading. This is the first reading, and so our next city council meeting, which is on November 17th, will actually take up the, the vote of, of passing this ordinance. But I want to make sure that anybody, if you have any questions, you, you ask those now. I don't know if any of the city planning commissioners have any comments that they would like to make since the, since we had the city planning meet last week. All right, let's move on in the agenda then. Thank you there, Aaron. Next up, this is the City of Opaaca Downtown Economic Development Incentive Program, which I have on Page 196 here. So I would, I guess I would just open it up to Aaron.
Thanks, Mayor Smith. So I'm going to just set this up. And as you can see, and as Mayor Smith said, it's on Page 196 here, Hackett. There's information in there. But we're also going to have a little slideshow presentation. And I'm going to kick it over to Andrew Dane, because Andrew has been as involved in this as I have, as we've moved throughout the process, as has Mayor Smith. So just to, to set this up, I've, I know I've put it in some of my monthly reports, my newsletters, but we started this, kind of putting this framework together, and then meeting with this economic advisory group, as we coined it. And it was, that was at the end of September, and then one meeting in October. And we've kind of vetted some of these things, had discussion around questions that we had. We wanted to make sure that we got that, that input from business leaders, building owners, people that have been through a project in the downtown area, as we look to make an impact in our downtown area. As a reminder, this was really to, to invest in one of our assets, which is our downtown area, and our old buildings that are needing work, needing facelifts, things like that. And we're doing so, and proposing to do so, which Andrew will get into more detail through TIF 10, and the transfer from TIF 4 to TIF 10 specifically. And we'll talk about the amount. And Kathy will be able to chime in on that as well. I know we're, we're covering TIF tonight. So guys, we're actually, though we have this as an action item, if you want to see things on the TIF part of the committee as a whole, it would be absolutely okay to table this to November 17th, because the reality, if you wanted to, if you felt comfortable moving forward, you can do that too. But the reality is, is that a piece of this is reconstituting the CDA, which I plan to bring forward, plan to speak with Mayor Smith about and bring forward on November 17th anyways. So it's not like it would be setting anything back. But that's a, kind of, I guess, setting the table for Andrew. And Andrew, I'm going to pull up your slideshow and go through that, I believe. If I can find it. Hold on a sec. There we go. Can you guys see that?
Yes.
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 Perfect.
You might wanna enlarge it, I don't know.
I can do that, let me work on that, here.
Yep, thanks.
I was talking to you and I had it off, but yeah, you're.
Is that better?
Yep, I think so. I don't think you can get it any bigger.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I hope so, cause that's as big as I can.
That's.
All right. Uh, so Andrew, can you, are you on, Andrew?
I'm here.
All right.
I'll click through it as you would direct me to.
Not sure what's going on with my background there, but.
Why, is it supposed to be color?
I don't know what it, it's not my office. It looks like some weird virtual background, like a European village or something, what is that? Um, okay, well, um, yeah, you guys, I think this program is a long time coming because I'm looking back at, um, a lot of the planning you've done over the last five to ten years and going back even further than that with the establishment of some of the historic districts downtown. And I know in conversations with the mayor and others, um, this is something that's been in discussion for, for many years, so it's exciting to, uh, for me to see, uh, this coming, coming together. Um, I think it's got really, um, with these incentives that the city's putting together with a grant writer on board with the city, with opportunity to use some state and federal tax credits. Um, I think we, we have kind of a neat opportunity here to really have a fairly, you know, noticeable impact on the physical, uh, makeup of the downtown over the next several years, um, and of course, that'll just be amplified with the Main Street project, so, um, I'm, I'm certainly excited about it. Next slide, Aaron. As Aaron mentioned, we had a advisory group that met a couple times this fall to help provide input on, on this program, and, uh, we, I think we got some really good input here, um, kinda steering us toward the grant, uh, route and the matching grant programs and, um, away, excuse me, uh, sort of pivoted away from the idea of doing a loan program, which was something that we had, had some discussion on, but over, with some feedback from the committee and further reflection, we, we felt it really made sense to focus on the two grants. Um, it's kind of the primary, uh, components of, of this program. Next slide, Aaron. So really, the overall purpose is to support the continued revitalization of that, of the downtown area, and, um, I, for me, it's probably more than that. It's also really about establishing an image and, uh, really conveying, you know, really the heart and soul of your community, and, uh, really embracing this chain to main tagline and, and seeing some, the city really put, um, uh, revitalize through that, as part of that, and then aligning with some of the goals and strategies and the strategic plan that Aaron's put together and the city comp plan that I've been working on with Plan Commission over the last several months. Next slide. So I was gonna just walk through, there's the two programs, a facade matching grant program, which is pretty straightforward. Uh, it's, 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 um, a matching, it's a program to help incentivize improvements to visible exteriors, uh, that improve the curb, curb appeal of the building. Next slide. And so from your downtown plan, you've got some examples of, um, where this, different types of opportunities to, to make building, uh, facade improvements, and these are just some sort of illustrative examples that are in the, in that plan, um, but certainly each business owner or property owner, you know, has the opportunity to kind of look at, needs to decide what makes sense for them. Uh, these are just some, some examples of, of projects, um, that were identified in, in that downtown plan. Next slide, Aaron.
Andrew, I'm gonna just jump in for a second here while we're on this. Um, I know that there has been some concern, there was conversation around these types of things within the downtown plan and specific things being called out and questions on, would I have to do that exactly because it was in the plan? The answer to that is absolutely not. I think the way we are viewing this is, these are ideas, it's, it's things to get people, um, thinking, and it's, it's one of a number of tools that we want to provide in a toolkit type, uh, resource packet that would accompany the application. So, um, just wanted to clarify that. Go ahead, Andrew.
Yep, yep. Um, yes, you can go to the next slide there. So just some other examples, I mean, I think this one is, is pretty good too, this kinda showing some of the rear facades on North Main, um, and I think, so as we've defined it here, this, you know, program might help incentivize some front-facing, Main Street-facing enhancements, but could also put, provide some funding, um, to assist with some enhancements, um, facing Rotary Riverview Park. I know that's come up as, as a priority, um, in lots of, uh, previous discussions and plans. So I think this provides some nice, uh, flexible funding opportunities to address kind of the fronts and the backs of some of these buildings. Next slide. And then the other program that's part of this is the Building Repair Matching Grant Program, and this one is sort of a trend we started to see, maybe, at least I started to see, maybe five to ten years ago, a lot of downtowns that, um, had traditionally been very much focused on facade grants, started making their programs more flexible to include general building alterations, um, and, or adding new programs to address things, you know, interior and exterior impro- uh, improvements. So this could be, uh, HVAC, structural, uh, roofs, um, and the intent is really to fund those larger building repairs that are required to support, um, those commercial and residential uses, but it doesn't have to be, um, visible from the, from a public right.
Andrew, I can't see anyone's faces, so I'm not sure if you hit mute or if you're still with us.
I see him, but I think he's pros.
Okay, that's all right, I'll, I'll take it over from here, and if he joins us, well, that sounds good. Um, so this, this third program, um, he's gone over the facade and he's gone over the, um, capital improvement or infrastructure improvement. This third one is a working capital low-interest loan program, and this was kind of the third silo of programs that we had talked about. Um, this one, I think we feel like is, we still have some work to do. Um, right now, we're bringing forward the previous two, uh, as, and you'll see the details in those in a second, but the working capital low-interest loan, there was just a lot of stuff we weren't quite sure on, and we wanna continue to work through that in, in quarter one of actually two thousand twenty-one and possibly bring forward something that we feel really good about moving forward. Now, we didn't want this to hold up the grant programs or the, uh, that, that Andrew just covered. Um, one thing that came up in our economic development advisory group was, you know, as we have this Main Street work happen, all the jarring and all of that stuff, uh, roadwork, that could possibly impact these buildings that may, may need some shoring up on bricks and facades and things like that, even prior to some of that work happening. So we want, our goal was to get this program up and running, applications out, um, so if someone wanted to do some work prior, uh, to that Main Street project, they could do that. So again, we didn't want this work, working capital low-interest loan program to hold that up, but we are still looking at that. So here's, we're gonna get into some of the details on how it looks. So you, I mentioned the three silos, you can see the three silos on top. Um, TIF would, uh, and honestly, the CDA, that's not right, we should have updated that. Um, the CDA, as far as the primary funding mechanism for low, low-interest loan, um, I would say through, through conversations with Justin Fisher at Baird, Kathy, um, I, I don't think that that's the most appropriate, but we'll talk about that later. TIF, right now, is what we're looking at for the primary funding mechanism. Um, performance measures, uh, you can see facades improved, the number of facades improved, amount of private capital dollars leveraged, um, buildings improved. That's what we wanna do, we, we wanna have as broad of a, as wide of an impact as we can, you know, and that's, I think you'll see that's reflected in kind of our dollar amounts, and I'll touch on that later too.
Aaron, I'm back on, sorry, I somehow lost you.
Okay, that sounds good. I'll tell you what, why don't I take us through these matrices, and then you can pick up after that?
Sounds good.
Um, so applicant for the facade matching grant program would be the property owner, same with the building repair matching grant program. Uh, the project location is in the, within the downtown district, and I'm gonna show you a map in a second on that. There's kind of a scope of work area that was defined within the two thousand seventeen downtown plan. That's the area we're focusing on, and we can hit that whole area with the amendments that you guys made as council to TIF ten, which allows us to spend within a half-mile radius of its borders. Um, eligible projects, you kind of already touched on it, but facade, I think you guys kinda know what that is. Signage, windows, doors, exterior walls, chimneys, all of that, things you can visibly see from a public, uh, right of way. And then building repair matching grant program, interior and exterior improvements, including roof, HVAC, electrical plumbing, insulation, structural, EDA-related improvements, it could be something like, um, improving, uh, upstairs units, uh, living units, things like that. I think this is one that we really see as a great opportunity, and we've, we've put the, the dollar amount up on this. One thing I've heard from people that are interested in moving or investing in the downtown area is they get into it, then they, they, they're excited about doing the whole renovation and the stuff that you can see, right? Um, and then they get into it, and they're like, wow, we've gotta spend twenty thousand dollars on updating our electrical to get it up to coal. We've gotta spend another thirty thousand dollars on a roof, we've gotta, you know, whatever it may be. And, and often that can kill a project that could add to our downtown area, and we're looking to, to try to, um, make that make sense for them. Ineligible projects, you can see there, um, just continue to go forward. So this is the amount, so what we're looking at right now is facade, matching grant program would be about fifteen, well, would be up to fifteen thousand dollars. Um, the fifty percent cash match, so it would be a fifty percent match. Um, again, it looks like, Andrew, we've got the wrong, this is from a, a previous meeting, it looks like. Please disregard the thirty percent of poor buildings. Uh, at one time, we talked about doing something different for buildings that were, um, really classified as in poorer shape, um, from kind of a window survey that was done as a part of that downtown plan. The group did say, no, we don't wanna get into that, uh, we don't think that maybe that's window survey was comprehensive enough, let's just stick with, uh, a consistent way to approach it. So, so it would be up to fifteen thousand dollars for facades, and then the match requirement of fifty percent, um, on that. Same with building repair, except with the match portion, but it would be up to twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, for building repair matching grant. Um, both of these would come forward through the CDA, as I mentioned before. So the CDA, the Community Development Authority, is something that was actually on my work plan at the start of the year to revitalize that. I think this is a perfect, um, first ta- first task or project to kinda get them involved in, um, and then can kinda even keep going from there. But the Community Development Authority, we would, um, reconstitute, and they would be the ones receiving the applications. Well, staff would receive the applications, they'd be forwarded to the CDA, and then the CDA would actually go through a, uh, sit through a presentation from the building owner, in this case, on, um, on the project and, and weigh in that way. Uh, as you can see, the presentation part would be required, um, and then just some other administrative details there that you can see. Andrew, I'll kick it back to you.
Okay, um, excuse me, so the, um, as far as the guidelines for the program, we want to leave it fairly flexible, but, um, you know, first and foremost, you know, participation in the program would certainly require any, you know, building permits. Um, you still have to meet the zoning code, you still have to get all your necessary build, building permits, um, whether or not you're receiving any city funding for the project. For the facade grant program, again, we don't wanna make it, um, overly restrictive to the point where it's just not economically viable for people to use the funds, but we do what, we do, we would like to see projects that are generally consistent or reflect the intent of, um, uh, the WPAK, some, uh, Main Street Design Guidelines that were developed for, for downtown, um, a number of years ago, as well as the more recently completed twenty seventeen WPAK of downtown plan. Between those two documents, you've got, I think, some nice examples of the types of facade enhancements that, um, you know, really make sense in a historical district. Um, and the intent is, you know, the CDA would be looking for projects that, um, you know, were, were reflective of those, um, best practices. Um, and then, um, the building repair, you know, program would be a little bit more, um, flexible there, um, but the intent is to fund building system repairs, that it's gonna extend the useful life of the building. Um, so maybe less so in terms of purely just cosmetic improvements, um, you know, we're not talking about equipment, we're not talking about operating capital. Um, we're trying to fix these buildings, basically treat them like infrastructure, um, and, and make an investment in that infrastructure for the next hundred years. Next slide.
This is, and I'll just jump in here, this is just the, in reference to the area I mentioned that was outlined in the, in the matrix. This is kind of the scope of work area we're looking at, we just shaved off. I mean, it, it ends right there at the end of the page, when you're looking on the west side and the east side. Um, but that is the area we're looking at, this is kind of the, um, where, where I talked about the high priority, low priority, medium priority. Um, you can see they're color-coded, but, uh, again, the group didn't think that taking those into, there just wasn't enough and extensive enough work done to, to really place a ton of priority on those, um, on, on those colors. But anyway, sorry, go ahead, uh, go ahead, Andrew.
Uh, I think you can go to the next slide. Um, so I think just a few final discussion points, the projects, as Aaron mentioned, would be reviewed, evaluated by the, by the CDA. Uh, we put together, um, program guidelines, uh, they're a little bit more detailed than what we've gone over tonight to help them through that. Um, the funding, I think, as Aaron mentioned before, for year one is proposed at five hundred thousand dollars. Um, the second year, again, with some input from the CDA, we'd be looking for a recommendation, um, probably come back before council. And a lot of these depend on how, you know, how many people obviously use the program, you know, not, not every time you create a, a program, people use it. Um, in an ideal world, you'd get, um, we'd be able to, um, really get some exciting projects forward quickly, but it's also a difficult time for everybody financially, um, and, uh, so we'll, we'll have to kinda play it by years. Um, but the, um, initially, we're hoping to do the, the half, the five hundred thousand, uh, to kinda get things, get things started. Um, and then also with regard to funding, like I mentioned before, I think with the grant writer on board and some other things going on, we might have the opportunity to leverage these dollars by, um, bringing some other grant money in. Um, so we'll continue to evaluate those opportunities, whether it's a CDBG, uh, application possibly, um, bonding, taxes and bonding, other grants, uh, marketing. I think one of the pro, one of the ideas I'm really excited about, um, is really working with, uh, um, Aaron and, uh, to help really market, um, this program as well as the historic tax credit opportunity, so that, um, for investors that are looking to make a bigger, um, bigger investment, we might be able to put, um, help them with, uh, working their way through and taking advantage of those historic tax credits. Um, and then, uh, lastly, um, just wanted to put in a little plug that, um, we've submitted and were accepted into the, uh, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation's Connect Communities Program. Um, and so that's also gonna provide us an opportunity to network with other communities around the state that are, um, looking to, uh, revitalize their downtowns and give us, um, I think, some exciting tools to, to get off to a good start with that. In terms of marketing this program, Aaron and I talked about, this is such a small area, you know, we, we already know several folks that have expressed interest in it, and including, you know, people from out of town, but I think we can simply get out there and, um, get some letters out to the property owners and follow up, uh, individually, cause there's not that many buildings within the district. All right, Aaron, did you wanna jump?
Yep.
To the last, uh, and I just wanted to put one, um, little proposed change to this since we- this since we sent the materials out. One of the things that in reviewing some other programs, it, um, we thought it might be beneficial to provide some flexibility for maybe bigger projects that might come forward where we would, um, ha- allow the CDA to maybe make an exception to that, um, grant cap, um, that may be subject to council approval, for example, for a larger project that might exceed those dollar thresholds. Uh, we wanted to, um, make that, um, an opportunity for the right, if the right project comes along. And I think that just about does it, uh. Aaron, like, so, uh, we'll take questions, comments?
The, the only other thing I'm just going to throw up here, guys, I just wanted, just so you can see that it's, you know, slideshows and presentations are all good, but I did, I did want you guys to see that, um, that there is an application drafted, which you can see on your screen right now. So it is really, you know, pretty close to being ready to go. Um, again, uh, if it's totally fine and doesn't back anything up if you decide to table it tonight, um, but on the 17th, it would be good once the CDA is reconstituted. So anyway, uh, go ahead, yes, questions, we are happy to answer them.
Aaron, I have a question. This is Scott.
Yep.
Uh, can you explain a little bit the city's end of the funding source? You mentioned 500,000. Can you explain where that's coming from, how, how that's working through TIF 10?
Yep, so this was a part of, uh, kind of the whole strategy when we were amending the TIF plans earlier this year, Scott. Um, we amended the TIF plans and, and when we did so, we created a half mile radius around both TIF 4, which is the McDonald's area, um, as well as TIF 10, which is the downtown area. We also during that time, uh, because we knew this was something we wanted to be able to do, we changed the plan to where TIF 4 could be a donor to TIF 10. So TIF 4, which has increment that's sitting there, so it's not like we're borrowing or anything like that, it's increment that's built up. We would be donating that to TIF 10, which has a bunch of real non, nonprofits in it, non-tax revenue generating things with the rec center and, and things like that, um, to be able to spend it in this downtown area. Does that help?
Yeah, because I'm looking at TIF 10's numbers, and I'm wondering where the dollars are coming, but now it makes sense if we're going to transfer, so, yeah.
Good question.
Thanks.
I, I'd just like to, this is Dimitri Martin, I, I'd just like to comment that, um, I think it's just great that you're looking at, uh, providing some resources for the downtown area, especially on North Main Street. A lot of businesses, uh, that, you know, don't seem to, to last very long on North Main, um, there are exceptions, of course, but, um, I think part of it is, you know, just getting investors interested in the, in the buildings and, uh, and having, having this sort of financial backing by the city, I, I think could, could, uh, attract some investors and, and potentially, uh, revitalize it, so, um, I, I think this is great.
Thanks, Dimitri.
Dimitri, uh, thanks for that comment, too, and I, you know, I think in order to be effective, it would be great to, even to try to put together some outreach, so, you know, we may be following up with you and for some ideas on how to, um, out, provide some outreach on this program to make sure, you know, not only the existing property owners and business owners are aware of it, but as people are coming into the community looking to invest from elsewhere, um, that they're aware of those, that that's out there, um, for them.
Yeah, um, Andrew, thanks, uh, Aaron, thank you. I have some comments that I would like to, uh, speak to both of you on, but I don't think we need to include the full council, they're just little things that I observed as we go through this, but I, I do want to give my, my thoughts on this as, um, and, and I, I no longer own any, uh, buildings in the downtown area, but I've no, owned a number of those buildings over the years, and I, I know the thing that you struggle with most if you're a downtown business, uh, and in an older building is, is that, uh, spending money to make improvements that don't really help your bottom line. And so this is one of the things that I think is, is going to be a huge benefit to the people that are in the downtown to make sure that these buildings continue to last for another 125 years or so. So, um, I, I think it's a great program, quite honestly. And then we threw in the last one where you have the working capital, too. Again, um, we, we fully expect that, that people, um, need to invest in their own thoughts and ideas and business that, as they go forward, but if we can give them a little help to, to maybe, uh, get a little better cash flow, and I, I, I always think about this when I look at the new projects or, or even existing projects, uh, with just a little bit more cash flow, they, they maybe could get through some hard times or, or maybe improve what they have there a little bit more to, to bring more people in and, and, uh, it, it, it's a win-win for just that business, but the other businesses in the downtown, and that obviously helps the city then, too. So I, with that said, I, I don't think I've heard anything else. What we're looking for is, I'm sorry, somebody want to say something? Okay. We're looking for a motion to approve this, uh, downtown business incentive program. And again, remember that when you make this motion, you are making a motion to approve this program, you're not, uh, making a motion to approve the presentation that you saw tonight, so, um, and, and there is some differences, obviously, but yeah.
This is Dimitri Martin, move to approve.
Mary Fair, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Martin, second by Fair, that we approve of the downtown business incentive program, uh, and move forward with, uh, to move forward with these matching grants. Any discussion? Sandy will call a roll. Thumbs up.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, uh, Aaron and Andrew, thank you, that was a nice presentation, appreciate it. Look forward to, to helping our community. All right, uh, next up, uh, we have, uh, on Churchill Street, we have a, a new no left turn while flashing sign on Churchill Street, uh, what we're doing here is just cleaning up our ordinance here, so, um, this is a, a change in this ordinance, so, Justin, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor, uh, this is actually, yeah, a, a edit to our official sign map. So this goes back nearly a year ago, uh, city, myself, Chief Hosele, um, and others from the PD had a meeting with the school district and DOT, and basically it regarded the, that intersection of Churchill Street and Riverside Drive in the congestion that can happen there, uh, when school is let in and also let out. Obviously, there's been complaints there in the past, uh, we've received, and the, the school district was most concerned with was just the busing. Uh, obviously with, uh, the high school being outside of city limits, they have quite a distance to go, uh, busing children to the learning center, the middle school, and then the high school. So the congestion that got, that would build up in that intersection became problematic. Uh, so during one of these several meetings, we came up with the idea of restricting the left turn, uh, to Park Avenue, um, which if you go scroll down to 202, uh, shows an aerial and where the sign is located right now, uh, by restricting that left turn, uh, really allowed things to flow much better, uh, because what would happen is somebody want to turn left, and they wouldn't be able to, and then there'd be a backlog of cars and buses, uh, through the Riverside Drive intersection, basically allowing no one to go in and out, um, it just made it very problematic. So when we forced them, uh, we did a trial, we put up a temporary sign, we forced them to go around, uh, to the next inter- intersection, Demerit, or even further, uh, basically that backlog wouldn't occur and flow through here, even though it is a lot of cars, got much better. Uh, so it became apparent that we should make this permanent, uh, and in order to do so, we need to enact this ordinance, uh, which is the first reading tonight, and once it is, uh, enacted, uh, here in the near future, it goes on our official sign map, and then the police are able to, uh, enforce it, um, if anybody does, in fact, take those left turns, uh, during the specified school times of 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM, and then 2:45 PM to 3:15 PM. Picture of the sign that we have there now is on 203, if you want to see it, it's a flashing sign using a solar panel. Yeah, again, we just want to make this official so that police can enforce it in the future. Mayor, if you're talking, you're on mute.
What was your first clue, my lips were moving? So, uh, thank you for that, Aaron. Chief Hosele, uh, do you, I, I, the only reason I'm asking this question is, is because we normally don't try to, to waive the first reading and, and move right on to the second reading, but, um, my answer, your answer to this question is, is going to, uh, decide whether I suggest something. Have you seen, uh, even though the sign is up, have you seen an issue where people are still turning left there, and you feel like you, you might need to do a little enforcement there?
There'd be a lot of enforcement going on. If we do not have a squad car parked there, people will almost run the sign that's in the middle of the road, that's in the middle of that turn lane, they will still attempt to make that turn there, um, instead of going up another 75 yards and making that left turn. So we have had a squad there every morning during school hours, and every afternoon we have a squad one available when they're not handling calls that are sitting, that is sitting in the parking lot of the hut. Um, we've received numerous complaints from businesses at that location about vehicles also cutting through, um, their businesses to do a shortcut to get onto Park Avenue. So I would think maybe after, and we've been giving, um, warnings to those vehicles, so I would assume after this is accomplished, a few citations, the word's going to get out, and people will begin to comply. And it really has made a difference at that intersection. Um, if you pick your children up or drop them off in the mornings, you can see how much quicker the traffic does flow through there. So this is, um, this has worked out really well, um, for traffic flow, and I also agree for safety of the children for crossing the streets.
All right, uh, anybody else have any questions or comments? Again, I, what, I'm sorry, Dave?
My question is, uh, what would be the, what is the penalty, a fine of how much, or could that be shown on the sign as well?
Well, it gets, it gets to where there's so much wordage on a sign that nobody, I guess nobody will read that. Um, so it'll be for, um, an improper left turn or failure to follow, um, sign, I think it's about 180-some dollars.
It's, uh, this is Tom Hart, uh, improper left turn is 175, 30, and three demerit points.
So, and we've been given, Dave, we've been giving warnings for over a year.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm all for the situation. I just thought, I remember coming out of Walgreens, that you can't, there's a no left turn to go west, and I thought there was a number, like a $200 fine or something right on that. It was not a cluster of signs, but I thought I saw it, so.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Dave, I have to share this, I, I think that's hilarious that you said that, I think it's a good question, but I remember when I was with the parking rec, you, we had a sign go up, and you, it was, you said, make sure it says have fun on it, and now you're, now you're wanting to put what they're going to get fined.
Well, okay, so, and given the information here, uh, and, uh, you know, we, obviously, you know, school isn't every day of the week, but there, it, there's still quite a bit of traffic there, I know, because I drop my grandkids off some days. Um, I mean, I, I think the sooner that we do this, the, the, the better it's going to be for that intersection, and it will be better for the, our police department too for enforcement. So I, I would suggest that we waive the first reading of this, uh, and then go right to the, the, the second reading tonight and, and try and get it into, uh, the ordinance into place, uh, you know, in the next couple of days here.
This is Keeland, I move that we waive the first reading.
Olson second.
I would, I would like to second that motion.
Okay, thanks, uh, it was motion by Keeland, second by Olson, to, uh, waive the first reading of this, uh, ordinance number 11202020. Any discussion? I think we, Sandy, can we do this with the voice? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's do it with a voice vote, then. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. All right, so we're on the second reading. Anybody would like to make a motion to approve?
This is Mary, I'll move to approve ordinance number 11202020.
Motion by Fair.
Second by Lori.
Uh, second by Lori Chestnut, that we approve, uh, ordinance number 11202020. It's an ordinance amending the official traffic map of the city of Opaco, Wisconsin by changing street signs. Uh, any discussion? Sandy will call a roll. Sandy, you're difficulty here right now. All right, let's see what, he's got his whole, um, thumb up now, so.
Great.
He's good.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Pat Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Uh, Justin, thank you, I think you still have another item, don't you?
I do, uh, 204 is my next memo. This deal, deals with our industrial park, and out there we have, uh, roughly 75 acres of open land, um, the city owns and that advertises and looks to develop. While that land sits vacant, we try to recover some of our costs or make a little revenue by, um, having an agreement to allow farmers to crop that land. This sort of agreement in, has been going on for quite some time. Uh, it's up for renewal, uh, so I took it out or advertised it for, for bidding, um, and sent it out to a number of, uh, farmers in the area. What I got back, though, was, uh, three proposals, uh, which are shown on my memo, uh, a breakdown of what the cost they're proposing per acre. Could jump forward to page 207, Aaron, please. Basically, here's an aerial showing our industrial park. So the double hash, we allow any type of cropping to go on there, so mainly it's corn. Uh, the ones that are single hash, uh, we're, want those to stay as like a low lying crop, so mostly hay or perhaps soybeans, uh, but the intent of that is we want to be able to, uh, show off these smaller parcels to somebody and be able to see what's actually there, they can see what they're buying. It's kind of difficult to see the land when there's six foot of, uh, corn in your way, so, um, you know, the larger section is not as needed to do a visual inspection. So, you know, the larger section is not as needed to do a visual inspection, but more or less just kind of an acreage on overlay. So the agreement breaks down in that regard, where they're allowed to do basically unlimited type of crop in the double hash, in that it's a little more restricted in the single hash. So getting back to proposals, the highest proposal was from Brian Nemeth. He is a small dairy farmer out of Manawa, looking to kind of increase his cropland to be able to feed his, his herd and produce more milk. For both section A and B, he proposed paying $100 per acre. So every year, he needs to pay the city $100 per acre for those approximate 75 acres. The agreement starts on page 205, very similar or almost identical to the ones we've had in the past. The total cost that we receive is about the same, even though that our acreage has reduced because the cost per acre during this submittal had increased quite a bit. So, so basically, it's, it's a revenue source while we can get this land developed. If we do sell the land, we have that option to basically take acreage away. There's wording in there that if, if the farmer, Mr. Nemeth in this course, in case hasn't done anything to the land, we can just take it back. If he's planted a crop, we need to reimburse him for his loss, and that has not changed from past agreements as well. So I'll just open it up to questions. Otherwise, I'm looking for approval to go into agreement with Brian Nemeth for the lease of our cropland for the years of 21 through 2025.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Your, your map needs to be updated a little bit there, Justin, but.
Move to, move to approve, Martin?
Motion by Martin, second by Peterson that we approve of entering into an agreement with Brian Nemeth for the lease of crop and grasslands in the Opaqua Industrial and Technical Technology Park for the years 2021 to 2025 for $100 per acre. Any discussion? Sandy will call a roll? Thumbs up.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachetzky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right, got another item here, Justin. Go ahead.
I do. The next memo is on page 211. This has to do with our HVAC maintenance service agreement. So this takes care of all of our HVAC systems in all of our facilities. So City Hall, Rec Center, and PD are the main ones. We've been doing this agreement for a number of years as well. It is set to expire by the end of the year. So Russ Montgomery and I put together a request for proposals, actually a request for, for bid, excuse me, advertised, it put it out there, and the bids were received in red on October 20th. We only received two bids, which we're not very concerned about at all. ACC was the low. Now, they're the ones that won this, the last time this came up for renewal. When they won it three years ago, the savings was about $2,000 from the previous contractor. This one here increased about $500, so we think that the numbers are still good. ACC's been doing a great job. They've been doing, been a good partner, and they really help us take care of our HVAC systems, which can be fairly costly to maintain and obviously to purchase. So basically, if there's any questions, I'll open it up. Otherwise, I'm looking for approval as listed on my memo.
All right, thanks, Justin. We're looking for a motion to approve this agreement.
Move to approve, Lori.
Olson, second.
Uh, motion by Chestnut, second by Olson, that we approve of entering into an agreement with Automated Comfort Controls Incorporated for building HVAC maintenance services for the years 2021 through 2023. Any discussion? Sandy will call a roll? Thumbs up.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Aye.
Scott Pachetzky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you, Justin. Next up, we have license report 1517. I, I think the only thing that we have on there is you, you see the double asterisk there, but they won't give this individual their license until that's all taken care of. So we can go ahead and approve that license report, 1517.
Move to approve 1517 license report.
Motion by Lori Chestnut?
Keeland, second.
Second by Kea, Alan Keeland, that we approve license report 1517. It's an operator's license and, of course, pending background checks and payment of money owed to the city. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Anybody that want to abstain? Motion carried. All right, let's go down to Communications, Recommendations of the Mayor. Just a couple of things. One, I, I might be jumping the gun on this a little bit, but as you plan forward for December, our plan is just to have one meeting in December, and it will be the first meeting, the first Tuesday, which I think is the first, isn't it? If I remember right.
It is.
Yeah, December 1st is when we'll have our, our, hopefully, our only meeting in December. Now, if there are some things that come up that we need to, uh, do, then we'll have to call that 15th meeting. But for now, we're, we're thinking of it as kind of a Christmas present to all to, to not have that meeting. To go along with that, the plan for virtual meetings is going to continue through the end of the year. I think sometime in December, we'll have that discussion and see when we'll get back to, um, meeting in person. So, and I would expect that committees are, should be still handling this virtually. I, I, so no reason why we should go back to face-to-face meetings at this time. And then the last thing, I just want to remind you that don't jump off this meeting because we do have a, a committee of the whole meeting right after this, which has to do with, with a couple items that are for our budget for next year. So anybody else have anything for the good of this meeting tonight? All right, we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Keeland, second.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that council adjourns till our next regular council meeting on Tuesday, November 17, 2020, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. We are adjourned at 7:22 p.m. Anybody need a break here, or can we just move forward?
I'd like three or four minutes, please.
All right, let's, let's come back on at, let's come back on in five minutes. Let's go ahead and move into our next meeting. This is the committee of the whole meeting, and I'll call the meeting to order. Uh, we have, Sandy, do you need to take role, or can we just say that everybody, the same people are here?
Whatever you'd like to do, Mayor.
Yeah, I think it's, hey, thank you, Sandy. Yeah, I have not seen anybody drop off, so the same council members are in attendance, which was everybody for that meeting. So let's, there's an agenda here. It's, it's just some handouts that Kathy sent to us this afternoon and downloaded to our website. So we would need a motion to approve this agenda.
Move to approve, Lori.
Motion by Lori Chestnut, second by Keeland, that we approve of the agenda to the committee of the whole meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. All right, let's go to that, that one item there, on there, it's fiscal year 2021 workshop, and it has to do with our transit fund and then also our, our TIF funds. Kathy, I'm assuming you're going, or Aaron, do you want to add anything at the beginning or just go right to Kathy?
We can go right to Kathy, Mayor.
All right.
All right, I put together the transit fund budget based on information received from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation with our rural transit grant again this year to remind everybody, 2021 is going to see some leftover CARES Act money, being able to handle any shortages in revenues that we can anticipate. So that's where I'm seeing with the, if we got back up to what we were in 2019 with revenues, that we should be able to maybe see some profit in this fund. And going forward, just to let you know that it also shows, although not much, would be a decrease in the amount of revenue that we'll be getting from King as we've been watching their usage of the transit, being lower with their lower population. So their usage is minimal, probably mostly for medical transports. So that's where we should make a good showing in 2021 with this fund finally. So I'm happy that we're, we've gotten some extra money from the federal government on rural transit. Anybody has any questions? We can go on to the TID districts. So this is just an update from our joint review board meeting in June. I've been pretty much updated our projections that we had with the new increments that came out from the state of Wisconsin. And so we're going to just quick go over what changes are made with the projections in each of the funds and give you an idea what we're looking for. So again, just here's all of our TIF districts. Reminder that we have two closed, so we're down to six. So sooner or later, these will, we'll get that this isn't going to be that long of a meeting handling all of the TIF districts. So the first slide, next slide I want to show you is, this is what our outstanding TIF debt looked like before we went out to the market this year and refinanced the 2010 TIF eight refinancing debt. So this is what our projections were in May with that debt. And the next slide is what it is now. So our annual debt service is going to be able to handle up to only 2025. We are cutting off, projecting to cut off 25 or five years of debt. So then our, on the next slide, it shows that's what our extend, outstanding TIF debt is going to look like in 2024. So we went from 20, 20, 2030 to 2024, and all of our TIF districts will be debt-free. So I'm very excited. The bond proceed, the, the bonds that we sold did get us a really good rate, and, and talking to Standard and Poor's and the rating agency, they're very impressed with the fact that we've been doing this type of planning with, with the TIF districts. So it's, it's good that we're in, in this path going forward. So the next slide is TIF 3. Again, this is the business park. Just a reminder that there cannot be any more incentives given out in this district. It had a close date of, for any new incentives as of 2018. So this TID is really just sitting there with vacant land as the only incentive that we can give right now and to finish up paying off its debt. So the next slide is our projection budget, and there was a slight uptick in our increment from 402,000 in increment to 411, and that has to do with some of the smaller developments that we did get in, in that district. So it, it, as the district continues to improve, we should see some more, up, more increment going forward. The other one is we had a little bit more personal property in there, another $6,000 worth of personal property revenue and computer aid, so we're getting a little bit more taxes from that. The other financing sources is a, the transfer from TIF 6. So TIF 6 is going to be, is the donor TID to TIF 3, and we're looking at, again, using TIF 6 increment to accelerate the debt service and pay off the outstanding debt and business incentive development agreements that we have outstanding with Farmer State Bank, which holds the Spirit Industries debt, and Carousel Gymnastics, and Presto are the three outstanding development agreements out there. And so we're looking at getting those paid off and closing that TID again in, in 2022 with one more increment in 2023, and it's still having a balance at the end of, when we close it. Next slide. It's TIF 4, and a lot of discussion was tonight in the council meeting regarding TIF 4. Again, this is over by McDonald's Pick and Save in that area, and the budget on the next page shows, if you can blow it up just a little bit, Aaron? Is that we're going to be looking at other financing uses, and that's going to be that transfer of about $500,000 to TIF 10. And again, in 2022, about $500,000. Uh, and again, in 2022, about 500,000. Uh, this TIF is in very good, uh, financial position. Uh, it's our highest valued TID. Um, and again, uh, it, it's, uh, generating enough that it can keep up with, uh, its debt and, which is minimal and, um, and, uh, pay off TIF 8. Um, if you see in the projections in 2025, there's, uh, huge, uh, 1.4 million and another almost a million in 2026. Uh, it will be to, uh, do a partial payback, um, to, um, TIF, uh, TIF 8's, uh, outstanding advances to the water and sewer utilities. Um, not the full amount, but enough that we can, um, satisfy the PSC for the water portion and still help the sewer, um, with, um, some of its, um, advance that, and debt that it incurred for TIF 8. So, um, but it, it, this TIF is, uh, healthy enough that it, it can still pull that million dollars out of, um, it, to help TIF 10. Next slide. This TIF 6 is the Fox Valley. Um, this has, uh, till 2022 to, uh, expend yet. Uh, this is another very healthy, uh, donor TID, like I said, to TIF 3. Um, and then the budget on the next page, we are looking, uh, again, um, to have a significant amount that if we had any projects, uh, still within the next year or so, to be able to, um, to do something, uh, in TIF, um, 6. Uh, right now, the, um, cause, uh, we're looking at, um, we've been doing the, um, groundwater, uh, improvements, so that's where this, about 55,000 I've got budgeted for, uh, conservation and development, um, is, is coming through. There is no debt service, um, and, um, the other financing uses, uh, is, um, uh, uh, transfers to TIF 3. So this one, uh, if we did keep it open to one year after, um, its expenditure period, it would have a gener- um, a balance of about 800,000, uh, to be distributed. Next slide. Um, TIF 8 is our east gateway. Um, this is our, um, most improved TID right now as far as value, um, about, uh, four to five million dollars worth of, uh, new value because of the premier, um, apartments, uh, complex going in there, uh, coming online and, and helping with that TID. So we're going to see in the budget on the next page that we are going from 169,000 of increment to 251,000 of increment, uh, which means that it doesn't need, because of, uh, our refinancing, uh, that we've been doing with its debt, um, being able to handle, um, a smaller amount coming from TIF 4, uh, which is allowing it to, um, TIF 4 to do the incentive to 10. Uh, again, at the end of its life, um, so it has no more incentives available. Uh, the expenditure period ended in 2019 and we're looking at, uh, closing this TID in 2025 with one more increment, uh, and, and having no residual, uh, increment left on in this TID. Well, next slide. This TIF 9, that's the buyer, old buyers' guide building that the founder has, uh, right now. Uh, it's showing a little bit more improvement, but it's still in a negative, uh, increment, so it's not generating anything except computer aid, uh, from the state, uh, for revenue. Uh, it has a, in, on the next page, Aaron, uh, for the budget, uh, it's a minimal TID as far as any type of, uh, uh, activity. We're using all of, uh, its, uh, original increment that was, was, was taxed, um, for transferring to TIF 10, uh, to pay off any debt and to, um, see it, get some seed money again for, for any development, uh, in TIF 10. So this one, uh, I'm slating for, uh, December to come in and, and close this TID. It'll give me one more increment, uh, in 2021 and then it'll be closed. So it, it's not, um, helping the city, um, with anything. Uh, next page is the, uh, TIF 10, uh, with the, uh, Rec Center and the school district property and some of the, uh, hotel and that. So, um, this budget here is showing, um, the, uh, money coming in of, uh, 500,000 and 500,000 in 2022 from TIF, uh, 4. Uh, it had, we, uh, with this, uh, refinancing of the 2010 debt, we paid off all of the debt for TIF 10. Um, and, uh, it has a very minimal, uh, increment, uh, and that's the reason why we really, uh, need to see about, um, developing that St. Mary's Church property, uh, to, to try and get some increment, uh, while we still have, uh, some time. 2022 is last year that we can do any expenditures out of this for incentives. Um, so we're going to have to try and very, be very diligent in trying to get something within the next two years, uh, at, at that site, um, so that it can, um, uh, get some increment, um, to pay back, so, but, um, in a nutshell, that's your tips now.
All right, uh, thank you, Kathy. Uh, anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Demetrius.
I have a question. Um, so once all the TIF districts are paid off, what kind of an impact could that have on our levy rate?
About $4.23.
Okay, per thousand?
Per thousand.
Okay.
As long as, as long as the, uh, when you do put that value back on the tax rule, that's would reduce the tax rate as long as, um, nobody, uh, the county or the school district because of that thinks that they can raise their rate. Because you will, we will have a portion of the, uh, TIF district, uh, value to be able to increase our levy, but it's not the full amount. So it's minimal, um, but you, you can help with, within, with increasing, uh, your coverage, but because you're putting so much value back on, it brings the rate down.
So for a $100,000 house, um, that would be about $422 a year, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
So in, in, just to clarify or, or verify, uh, that $4.23 you were talking about will not be the reduction on your city portion of the taxes, that's the, the total property taxes, cause once the TIF is closed, then the school district will share, Fox Valley will share in the reduction, so will the county, so, and the city. So the four will share proportionally based on their percentages that were taxed now. So your question, Demetrius, that it will go down on a thousand dollars of a house, will go down 423, that would be the total amount of the taxes that would go down.
Okay.
On a $100,000 house.
On a $100,000 house.
Right. Yeah, sorry about that, yeah. Okay, anybody else have any other questions?
You'll probably get another update again next year, um, when we do the Joint Review Board review, uh, and have the 2020 numbers. So, um, we'll keep projecting out there what, what, um, we can do with the TIDs, uh, and where they are financially, but right now they're, um, they're get, get, they're getting in very good pos- position to start closing them.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Kathy. Uh, again, I won't bore the rest of the council with some of my accounting questions, so I'll, I'll try and find you, uh, either tomorrow or Friday and ask a few questions that I see, but they're mostly out in the projection area, so they're, they don't affect, uh, 21 at all, so. But I'll wait till I see it.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? All right, uh, we're actually ready to adjourn, I guess, then.
Move to adjourn.
Sorry.
Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we adjourn the committee of the whole meeting, uh, this special committee of the whole meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We are adjourned at, uh, 7:48 PM.